Hi Sheldon, it's Sean Kirkpatrick here, just doing a quick sound check with you please. Hi Sheldon, it's Sean Kirkpatrick here, just doing a quick sound check with you please.
Hi Sean, I hear you now.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Reagan, it's Cheryl from the chambers, could I ask you to please do a sound check?
How about if I unmute? Can you hear me now?
Can't hear you Reagan.
Okay, I'm talking so. I'll try and log back in another way, I guess. Much, it's, it feels like it's, okay, okay.
You got ya, thanks.
Okay, there was a bar on the screen, so it was, it was showing, it was, okay, good.
Thank you. Hi Erin, it's Cheryl from the chambers, can we do a quick sound check?
Testing, testing.
Thank you. Danielle, it's Cheryl from the chambers, can we do a quick sound check please? Hi Trevor, it's Cheryl from the chambers, can we do a quick sound check please?
Yep, test.
Thanks Trevor, Anna, can we do a quick sound check please?
Uh, yep, uh, check, check.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Danielle, it's Cheryl from the chambers, can we do a quick sound check please? Sorry, say that again?
Three counselors online.
Three, okay, I'm just connecting myself. Hi Elizabeth, it's Cheryl from the chambers, could we please do a quick sound check? No, it's a bit muffled Elizabeth.
You hear me?
No, it's still muffled.
I'm just talking to the computer, there's nothing special happening, I'm lying.
Okay, we got you, thank you. Why? Moving your hair and something, head and something hits you? And you get super warm too. It's one, all right, I will call meeting to order, December 19th, 2023. Last meeting of 2023. Uh, need a motion to, sorry, the attendance is 100% if, is Council Romansky online? I can't see her.
I can see her spot, I just don't see her.
Council Romansky, can't see you, um, there we go, thanks. Oh. Council Romansky, want to turn your video on? There, oh, there we go. Thank you, all right, so we have 100% with Council Hughes, Romansky and Jolly, um, virtual. And I have Mike very quickly putting, um, one of you make the motion, but yes, um, the, we're making, uh, adopting the agenda, but it's going to be as amended because we're adding an emergent item, which is the Arts Advisory Committee appointments. So that will be coming up under number 10. So as amended, Council Kilik?
That the December 19th, 2023 agenda be adopted as amended.
All right, call for the vote. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. All right, we have some registered speakers today. Where's my list? Um, we have Sergeant Dwayne Moore, but we will get to when we get to the quarterly report. Um, and then we have Renee Lukey and Kathy Kirsch from Transitions. So I'll get you guys to come up to the mic right now. But we also have Sarah Vander Wolf, is Sarah online?
Yes, I am.
Hi Sarah, thanks for joining us, are you, did you want to speak, are you here just to answer questions?
Uh, just to answer questions, if there are any.
Okay, so currently, the Community Service Advisory Committee recommendations are still on concept. So if they, there, we will have no questions, but I totally appreciate you hanging out just in case they get pulled and there is some questions. So we will get back to you if need be. And then I also have a Nicholas Beatty who wanted to talk about the idling, is Nicholas with us?
I don't see him online.
Is he in chambers, Nicholas? Not in chambers, okay, he might show up before the end of this part of the meeting. But we will go now to Renee and Kathy. So are you guys both speaking?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five minutes each normally, it is.
We have made it close to that together.
For both of you, perfect, okay, go ahead.
Mayor Heron, City Council, Community Services Advisory Committee and fellow community members. Good afternoon, my name is Renee Lukey and I have the privilege of being the Executive Director at Transitions. And this is my colleague Kathy Kirsch, who is the Director of Children and Adult Services. To the A, I would like to take a few moments to recognize the City of St. Albert, the FCSS Department and the work of the Community Services Advisory Committee for their endless support in ensuring the necessary supports and services are available to all community members. We are very grateful to collaborate with the city and our fellow community partners in creating a place where all people can live in a safe, supportive and inclusive community. At Transitions, our values are community, connection, inclusion, belonging, teamwork and diversity. These are more than words to our staff and the people that we support. These words are the anchors to the work that we do each and every day. We don't just have them to look good on our website or social media posts. We live and breathe these words in all that we do. Inclusion means that someone has been included in their participation within a community activity or event. Belonging means that they feel like they belong in their community, the activities and events that they participate in. It is important to be included, but it's even more important that we provide opportunities for belonging for our community to be truly inclusive. At Transitions, we provide supports and services to people with developmental disabilities and their families. We support families starting from the birth of their babies and currently the oldest person we support is 94 years old. Our purpose at Transitions is to create opportunities to learn and grow as individuals and create experiences that will allow them to live a meaningful life in their own community where they are valued and belong. Over the past year, we have introduced learning sessions to the services that we provide within our adult services program. We identify this as a community priority as there are very limited options and training programs that support the learning needs of those with a developmental disability in our community. There are also limited opportunities for the people we support to actively participate in community activities, events and decision-making processes while feeling successful and a sense of belonging. These sessions were possible due to the FCSS grant that we received last year. Brian Manning was hired as a facilitator early on in 2023 and shortly after began his research in how to best support people. and shortly after began his research in how to best support people, sorry, to best support those we provide services to within the learning sessions. He easily could have went to the internet and looked for ideas, but instead he went to the people we support and the staff that work alongside them to learn about their goals and to find creative ways to bring these ideas into his lessons. Each series contains four to six sessions that work toward a common set of goals. A few examples include sessions called the Good Things in Life, Personal Vision and Goal Setting, Making Good Connections, Connecting With Yourself, Friends and Your Community. The sessions are filling very fast and we have offered repeated sessions to ensure that all those interested in participating have the opportunity. The success stories from these learning sessions are far beyond what we imagined they ever could be. The people we support have given them rave reviews and as a result of the learning sessions, many people we support have developed skills that are helping them to live a better life while living in the community of St. Albert. A few examples include four men in their twenties and thirties that had never met before, but now have a group of fishing buddies that they can go out fishing with each week. They are looking forward to their first ice fishing expedition this summer to, or this winter too. We also have two men who really wanted to live in St. Albert but could not afford to do so on their own. As a result of the learning sessions, they created a friendship that led them to wanting to be roommates. Together with Transitions, we were able to find an affordable place to live in St. Albert where they could have their independence and receive the supports and services they need to live safely and successfully in their own community. And we could go on with a variety of other examples. What we have learned from these learning sessions is that they're very successful, but the sessions in isolation are not enough. What we know is that we need to further educate those who work on the frontline supporting people with developmental disabilities. This includes our staff, parents, guardians, family members and our community partners. We cannot expect people with developmental disabilities to feel valued, included and a sense of belonging if we do not take the time to educate and support our community on best practices when creating an inclusive community. This includes providing knowledge and understanding of those with developmental disabilities along with the strategies that are needed based on the unique role that all members of our community play in creating inclusive spaces for all. Over the next two years, we have plans to expand our learning sessions for those we support along with the education sessions for our community, including community businesses. Unfortunately, the funding that we receive does not include funds for learning and education such sessions as the contract states that these funds must go to pay frontline staff and a small fee to help with the payment of those who work in areas such as leadership, human resources and payroll. This year, we have submitted an application to expand our programs with the support of the FCSS grant. We truly love every minute of having the Advisory Committee, City of St. Albert staff, Councillor Killick on tour for, with our organization and sharing the incredible work that happens at Transitions every day. This was definitely a highlight for us as we went through this application process. Again, we'd like to thank you for supporting Transitions and allowing us to be partners in cultivating a truly safe, healthy and inclusive community where everyone can feel like they belong. Thank you.
Thank you both. Um, does anyone have any questions for Renee or Kathy? Well, push your button. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, after your presentation, I wasn't, I apologize. I, I, are you requesting something else or is this just?
Yeah.
I, I just don't know what the outcome of your presentation is. Is it just thank you or is it thank you and we would like the full amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand? What, well, I'm sorry, I've.
So really it truly was, was a combination of both. It's about educating all of council because Councillor Killick was able to come about the work that we're doing and what we have used past funds for and also in, you know, hoping that there, the recommendations from the committee will be passed for us to be able to continue, um, with our, with our plans for the next two years.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I, I wanted to make sure that we were clear when you were stepping away from the mic. I wasn't sure.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Romanski has a question too, if you guys are okay. Council Romanski, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you for your presentation today and I appreciate the good work that you do in St. Albert. I did have one question, uh, within your group, it, it's mentioned that you do work for Garrison Lancaster Park, Edmonton, Sturgeon, Morneville. Are you focusing on specific works that you do in, in St. Albert here or is this a blended, uh, uh, presentation?
So the majority of the people that we support are, are people from St. Albert. There are very few people that we support that are outside of St. Albert, especially within our adult services program. Um, those other areas where we support people are primarily, um, through our family services and children's services. So we do get a grant from Alberta Health Services to support early intervention. And that's where we would see the majority of people outside of the City of St. Albert because we have a region in which we support for early intervention. Um, and so, you know, in regards to adult services, I think there is less than a handful of people that would be from outside of the City of St. Albert.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
You're welcome.
Alright, I see no more questions from members of council, so thank you guys for attending.
Yep, I'll just, if I could, again, say thank you very much for the great work you do with our, our residents and they are residents. They, they, although they are in a transitions program, they are still our residents and they're very dear and near to our hearts. And, uh, um, you do a great job. The tour we had there really opened my eyes personally to see not only the individuals that receive help, but the volunteers and staff that provide the help. Um, I'm, I'm not quite sure who benefits more from, from seeing that. Quite honestly, it's a, it's an awesome program. And again, thank you for the work, uh, that you and the team do for, for those members that are in, in transitions. You do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Killick. I'll echo it too. As a parent of a kid with developmental disabilities, what you guys do is fantastic. So makes, gives parents hope as well. Right. Yeah. Uh, so is Nicholas Beatty with us? Has he joined on Zoom?
No, he hasn't.
Okay, and he's not in chambers, so maybe we can reschedule him, reach out and see if he wants to come. Maybe he changed his mind. Okay, thank you. Alright Sarah, I'll just get you to hang on. I don't know if this is, if we're gonna need you, but we'll see if, when we get to consent agenda because that's next on our agenda. Say you want to move it. There's obviously eight point two was pulled for voting purposes. And because of that, we had to pull nine point one just for order, but everything else is still there. So Council Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one, twenty twenty-four budget minutes of October twenty-four thirty, November first, fourteenth, twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three and regular council meeting minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Seven point one, request for a city council motion from Arts Development Advisory Committee, Healthy Communities Mural. Seven point two, request for council motion from Community Services Advisory Committee, twenty twenty-four FCSS funding. And seven point three, request for council motion from Community Services Advisory Committee, twenty twenty-four Outside Agency Grants.
Awesome. I will call for the vote. Council Romanski, we don't have your vote. They all there now?
I sent it twice, Mayor. I'm in favor.
Yeah, I don't see it there.
Actually, sorry, it was sent to Sean. So Council Romanski, if you can, uh, click on everyone, then it will be shared with everybody.
Okay, sorry. Council Romanski, you understand that?
I don't have any idea why it would be going to Sean. The first one didn't and then all of a sudden it, it is. So I'm not sure what's going on here.
But you've changed it to everyone?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, vote is closed and that I'm assuming is unanimous, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now I get to read off all the stuff that was approved on consent. So minutes from December fifth, we also had a motion from the arts. Uh, sorry, and sorry, and also minutes from all the budget meetings. And then we also had the Arts Committee make a recommendation that was as follows. That the mural Healthy Communities located at twelve Perrin Street be removed for storage and its condition assessed to determine potential for future display at an undetermined location. So see a mural come down and reevaluate it. Okay, and these are big ones. So seven point two was that the following applications for two thousand and twenty-four FCSS funding be awarded as follows. Number one, the Boys and Girls, Boys and Girls Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Edmonton and Area Association for Mentoring, sixty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The St. Albert Community Village and Food Bank for their Community Liaison Program and Community Income Tax Program for seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-two. Oh, that was for the first program and then a thousand for the second program. Sorry about that. Uh, number three, St. Albert Family Resource Center for their Family Life Education Program, a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, St. Albert and District Further Education Association for their Newcomer Connections Program, seventy-two thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. Number five was the Out Loud Foundation for the LGBTQ plus Community Support Services. Uh, the Out Loud Outreach Services is the name of the program. They will receive a hundred and two thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Uh, number six, St. Albert Senior Association, um, for their Senior Solution Navigator Program, sixty-six thousand six hundred and fifteen. Uh, number seven was St. Albert Stop Abuse in Families Society for their Youth Counseling Program. They will be not receiving any funding this year. St. Albert Bereavement Fellowship Education and Support, five thousand. Transitions Rehabilitation Association of St. Albert and District for their Transitions Learning Sessions, seventy thousand three hundred and six dollars. And Neutral Ground for their two hundred, for their two thousand and twenty-four monthly events and online hub, ten thousand dollars. Councillor Killick, I should have asked you to read all those. And then also on consent was another big recommendation from the Community Service Advisory Committee. And this was for the two thousand and twenty-four Outside Agency Grants. Number one, the St. Albert Bereavement Fellowship for five thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. St. Albert Housing Society, fifty thousand dollars. St. Albert Senior Association, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. St. Albert Victim Services Association, seventy-four thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. St. Albert Community Village and Food Bank, a hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Stop Abuse in Families will be getting thirty-nine thousand. St. Albert and District Further Education Association, forty thousand dollars. St. Albert Family Resource Center, twenty-five thousand dollars. The Out Loud Foundation for LGBTQ plus Communication Services, or Community Services, sorry, twenty-eight thousand. Uh, Visual Arts Studio Association of St. Albert, fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty. And the Wildlife Rehabilitation Society of Edmonton, ten thousand dollars. Alright, that's all that was on consent, correct? Okay, now we will go to, uh, the much anticipated RCMP Quarterly Policing Report for Q two. The Q two? Yeah, Q two. And for everyone watching at home, this is Sergeant Dwayne, Staff Sergeant, sorry. Thank you.
No problem.
There's probably a big difference in there. Uh, Dwayne Moore, who's been, uh, doing a great job in our time of need, filling in as our officer in charge. Thank you. So go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Madam Mayor and Council, uh, for allowing me the time, uh, to come here and review the second quarter update through the, uh, St. Albert RCMP detachment. So this review will be covering off our second quarter for the RCMP, uh, uh, goes from July, uh, to September. So just a quick update in regards to, uh, body cameras and the field testing that we've been, uh, doing there. That's been in, uh, the news and um, much anticipated, uh, by numerous people within the community and that. So we hear about that fairly often. So, uh, we are continuing with that pilot project. The, uh, most recent update is that the contractor that we were using, uh, or the, the one who, the first contractor that we selected, uh, that body camera has failed the testing. Uh, so as a result, now we're moving on to the second one. Um, so, and, uh, that's a, that's a very good camera as well. That's for sure.
Just to be clear, we're not testing them in St. Albert though, are we?
We are not testing. No, there's, uh, three locations. Grand Prairie, Parkland and St. Paul are the three, uh, locations that are being piloted, uh, within Alberta. So there are, the body cameras are not being utilized here currently in St. Albert. Uh, once a contractor is selected, then it will be rolled out throughout the RCMP.
Thanks.
Yes. Um, I'm just going to review quickly here the annual performance plan. Uh, so these are priorities, uh, that are selected based off of, uh, input uh, from, uh, council, uh, from community members, um, you know, input from the community, however that may be with town halls, uh, different committees that we may be on, those type of things. So, um, it's not the RCMP, it's, uh, it's not K-division, it's not Ottawa. It's going to be, these are priorities that are of importance uh, to the municipalities and in this case the city that we would be policing. So the three that, uh, were selected, um, based off of all this, uh, feedback from the community, uh, were crime reduction, mental health and vulnerable communities and domestic violence and assaults. So I'll just sort of touch base with just a little bit on each one of those. So for our first priority, crime reduction, uh, the St. Albert, uh, Crime Reduction Unit, um, executed, uh, search warrants on two St. Albert addresses during this quarter, uh, with the, with the assistance of our emergency response team. Uh, and that resulted in the seizure of, uh, four firearms. Um, in another case, uh, St. Albert Crime Reduction Unit, uh, completed a warrant roundup, uh, where they executed fifteen outstanding arrest warrants for offenders, uh, residing in the St. Albert area. Uh, they also attempted to make contact with another, uh, additional, eighty additional offenders uh, who had outstanding warrants, but they were no longer residing in this area. So, uh, we were able to, uh, execute those fifteen warrants, which is, uh, you know, a big help, uh, being proactive, uh, try, to try and ensure the safety of the community. Uh, the members, uh, completed, uh, numerous community patrols, uh, that included, uh, because we're going back into the summer, uh, golf cart patrols, um, and throughout the summer. Um, patrols were also made on pathways and in parks, uh, to enhance the visibility of the community. And we continue to do that even now with the weather being a little bit cooler than that, but just more from the point of view that we're utilizing, uh, police vehicles out there as opposed to the golf carts. Uh, the second priority is, uh, mental health and vulnerable communities. So our, uh, Community Police and Victim Services Unit, our CPVS, engaged, um, with numerous stakeholders throughout the second quarter, including meetings with inter-agency committees, the VSU Advocate Group, VSU Board, uh, VITRA, which is the Violent Threat Risk Assessment, uh, that we utilize in schools, uh, fraud prevention, stop abuse in families, uh, just to name a few. Uh, CPVS also attended twelve summer camps. They included, uh, numerous ones for bike safety. Um, and then, uh, also just, uh, meet the RCMP and attended the schools where they started the grade six social skills and gave presentations on sextortion during their com classes. And, uh, the final item there was that the RCMP and, uh, Superstore stuffed cruiser, uh, for, with, for the food bank. During that, we raised six hundred and forty-five pounds of food and over eleven hundred dollars in, uh, cash donations. So that was a, a success for sure. And the final priority is, uh, domestic violence and assaults. Uh, so the Domestic Violence Unit, uh, they attended, uh, meetings for Domestic Violent Response Committee where they discussed pathways, uh, of referrals to help the frontline staff and all St. Albert organizations with, uh, Quick Referral Guide, long wait times for offenders to get treatment and stats from the, uh, uh, Safron Center, which is the St. Albert Sex, Sexual Violence Counseling Project. Uh, we had multiple case management meetings, uh, where, where held with VSU to discuss high-risk clients uh, that were in need of additional resources and support. And then the final item there is that, uh, starting in September, we began to attend court again in conjunction with our Victim Services Unit, um, to meet with any victims, uh, that have questions or concerns and then also to assist with the mediation, uh, between victims and the crowd. So that's, uh, that's very beneficial to have members in there with our Victim Services Unit as well. Um, the, the final item, I guess I just wanted to touch base on here and then if there's any questions, I'll answer those to the best of my abilities. As I know that staffing is, uh, you know, and visibility of the RCMP in the community has been, you know, you know, and visibility of the R C and P in the community has been, you know, uh a major topic uh since I've been here in the last couple of months. Um, so as it stands now, um it's greatly appreciated. Those five positions have been approved uh by council. Uh, the paperwork has gone through uh to Ottawa for the final approval, so that'll increase our number of uh members from uh contingent from seventy to seventy five. Uh, I have submitted all of the paperwork that I need on my end um in order to get those positions created, and um and so that's in the process. As soon as those positions are created, then uh we can have staffing, uh start the process to fill those hard vacancies. And I was just in contact with staffing this morning. Uh, they're fully aware of what's uh coming, and uh they're preparing to um uh get those positions filled as quickly as possible. Um, as I've stated in the past, we're probably not going to be getting any recruits out of depot. Um, but what recruiting has been doing a, an excellent job within this province, and the numbers uh from what I heard this morning have been uh triple what the expectations were for Alberta to providing recruits through to Regina, and those recruits will be coming back to Alberta. So that does help the city of St. Albert, because these recruits will be going to areas, um I'm going to say mostly in northern Alberta or those type of locations. Uh, and then that'll free up those uh uh those members that are currently there and awaiting a backfill for them to now come down into a spot like St. Albert. So I know that like just this week, we're going to be getting eight recruits. It wasn't very long uh that I, we were lucky to get one recruit a week. So now we're getting eight in one week. So those numbers are are very promising, and that should help out the city of St. Albert for sure. Uh, we do continue to have a number of soft vacancies, but the, what we're doing, we are managing that um based off uh with my ability to bring in uh additional resources, uh because you're not paying for those soft vacancies, so I'm able to backfill that with additional resources on a regular basis, especially for proactive patrols. Um. The final thing I would like to just sort of to mention is that, you know, I have been here for about two and a half months now. Um, I'm very grateful to everyone, including council, the police and committee for all the support that you've uh been providing to the R C and P. Uh, so I just wanted to thank everybody for uh for helping me out while I'm in this acting role. And if there's anything else that I can do, by all means, please let me know. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer those.
Thank you. I have a quick one about the new recruits out of depot. I would have thought St. Albert would be actually a good place for a new recruit to come and train. Is it just? But is, how how do, how do those decisions get made by the R C and P?
Um, well, um, I can tell you that uh in some, we did bring in probably four or five years ago, there was a number of recruits that were coming to the Edmonton area. Uh, that becomes a bit of an issue when it comes up time for transferring members when they get a, I'll say a prime posting like St. Albert, and then they're uh less than willing uh to start transferring to other locations. Um, so uh right now, like it's uh a lot of these recruits are going into these more remote rural type areas. Doesn't have to be into, you know, northern Alberta, but that could be, I'll just throw out just examples. I don't even, Edson, Hinton, you know, all white work places that aren't just in the Edmonton or Calgary area. But that does free up now, like I said, for those members who have been up there for their three, four, five-year postings uh and that are due to come out. They're not really able to come out until they get somebody else to go in there, because there'd be nobody left.
Right, yeah.
So they're able to put those recruits there. They still have uh members that might have only been there two or three years. They're able to train those members, the new recruits, and then we're able to get these four and five-year members to come down to an area like St. Albert.
It's nice to know that we're, nice prime location for a new, for an officer to be. I just felt like we should new, new graduates need to go somewhere. We should probably be doing our part to help train them up, but.
Oh, for sure. Yeah. No, no, and and those decisions are being made. They're not being sent to a place where it's only going to be, you know, five new recruits and they're on their own. Uh, that's uh, it's changed significantly since I went through uh twenty years ago, because that was kind of what would happen. You'd be left on your own. Uh, there is a much more robust system uh to ensure that those recruits are obtaining the training that they require in order to be successful in the job.
Awesome. Okay, I've got a few questions from councillors. I've got Counsel Broadhead, then Counsel Jolly, then Counsel Kilic. Go ahead, Wes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh thank you so much for your uh report here as Staff Sergeant, and I I I also want to thank you for your work that you've done in uh just giving us some data around uh regional uh vacancies as well. It's always nice to have a little empirical data that you can share with people and say, hey, you know what, St. Albert, and everybody's sort of in the same boat. We're working together to get it done. So uh, thanks for that. I appreciate it. Um, just a a question, um, the stats, um. Property crime, I, the city's growing, uh but not seventeen percent. I was just wondering, are you seeing something that is uh is unique in our community that, or is something happening that's a little bit different? I'm just looking at the uh a page, would that be uh three of seven, I think it is.
Yeah, so you can see that the property crime, and when we're looking at this, this is just over, um like you'll see, it's increased by uh twelve percent. Uh, that's just looking at a, you know, a three-month period from twenty twenty two uh over to twenty twenty three. Uh, increase of twelve percent when you're looking at those numbers of seven hundred and fifty four up to eight forty five, like those aren't uh significantly different. Um, so I'm going to say that we're continuing to see the same type of, you know, similar crime that would have been happening, whether it's uh, you know, going to be uh stolen property, those, those type of things. And it it's on the relatively minor end of uh of crime that St. Albert has compared to a number of other other detachments that we're responsible for. Um, but we monitor those trends, and then we, especially with the analysts that we have here. Uh, and we can start taking a look at those type of trends, and then, you know, when you have those one-offs, it's very difficult. But over a period of time, we can then utilize, especially like our Crime Reduction Unit, our G I S uh drug section, whatever that happens to be, where we see those crimes moving in a certain direction, that we can start uh utilizing those resources uh to combat that. We also, like I uh sort of touched on just briefly, but I've been utilizing more of a uh an enhanced position on a regular basis since I've been here, and that's to not just be the responding member on general duty, but now to get those members that are out there more for the visibility, whether we're you know, pulling people over, whether we're issuing tickets, issuing warnings, or just being visible out in the community and fully marked police cars, sometimes with the blue lights going, sometimes just stopping and talking to the you know, the children as they're on the side of the street there.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Jolly, you're up next.
Thank you. I've got an easy one, I hope. Um, in the priority two current status and results, it says that it was learned that St. Albert is in the top ten for diverse communities in Alberta. But I don't know what that means. Uh, are you able to explain that?
Yeah, so I think that the, what we were talking about there, and that information came from our uh C P V S unit. So uh, during one of their meetings, uh that just talked about that um the community itself is fairly diverse, where we may think that St. Albert is is not a very diverse community, but you have a number of different uh pe- people from different ethnic uh backgrounds and stuff that are living here, and the numbers show that uh you know, it is a somewhat diverse community as opposed to what maybe people perceive St. Albert as being.
Thank you. And how do we get those numbers?
Uh, that one, that came from um where we met with the K Division divert, diverse community engagement. So that is a unit or a group that was set up there on the R C and P side, where we have uh members of the R C and P community, whether it's R C and P um P Ss, M Es, like administrative staff that are from varying uh ethnic diverse backgrounds in order to assist the R C and P with maybe setting up programs that would be uh more representative and help out the community as a whole. So that came from there. If there's any for, any more specific information, I could look into that, provide that.
Yeah, that that would be just be great. I love statistics, and and that kind of statistic is certainly helpful when we're thinking about the community. Thank you.
Sure.
Good question, Counsel Kilik.
Uh, yeah, I had a similar question, but al- also on uh priority number three uh talks about victim services, and I, I may have this totally wrong, but I understand victim services is planning to be centralized uh by the provincial government into, I think, three zone, three centralized, four, four centralized zones. Um, what, what's the current status of that and, and will it uh, I guess be able to transition smoothly? I think it's in the new year, but um St. Albert has had a great rec- record of providing local victim services, great volunteers, great program. I think we've been recognized for it for several years, and I'm, I'm very concerned we're going to lose that. So I wonder if you have a, an update for us on, on that transition.
Yeah, so uh the plan is there that, yes, the province will be taking that over. There will be a number of boards that'll be set up throughout the province. So your local victim services board that you currently have here now will be dissolved in the upcoming year. It looks like that new, those new boards will be in place September, October of uh twenty twenty four. Um, how that will all roll out is still uh to be completely de- decided. Um, but the way I see it going, I think that St. Albert is, is not going to be, that's just my, the way I perceive it here right now, is that they won't see a significant impact there, because it is such a large city. Um, and you have, you know, and you do have an excellent group of victim services advocates and uh and board members, and everybody who's associated with that. I just went out and uh had a gathering with them here just in the last week, and it was excellent. So, and I expressed uh my gratitude for that. Uh, especially the advocates and and all the people who put in all the extra time there. Um, so I think we'll be, you'll be okay there. I don't know if you'll see a whole significant amount of change there. It's going to be the board that oversees that. It will just be a different board that might oversee a number of different areas. Where I'm from in Thorsby, Breton, that concerns me a little bit more, where it becomes very, like a more rural type of location, and now am I going to have my advocates that used to be maybe out in that area that were willing to be advocates in this, these fairly rural areas, because they knew that, you know, they knew the community and that, whereas now there's talk of those be, those advocates now being utilized, like, oh, you can start your day, and like, yeah, we're going to send you to Camrose, or then I need somebody from Camrose that's going to have to come out all their flats or whatever the case is. So that, I think in the more rural setting, that's a little more of a concern for me right now, until I see the full rollout of it. I think that uh St. Albert should be very well uh uh covered there with the, the victim services, especially the advocates and that like you have.
Uh, thank you, and I certainly hope so.
I have no more questions, and Counselor Mackay has indicated he'd like to make a motion, so go ahead.
Yeah, no, I will. Thank you very much. Um, that the R C and P Quarterly Policing Report provided as an attachment to the December nineteenth, twenty twenty three, a council agenda report entitled the R C and P Quarterly Policing Report Order Two for twenty twenty three be received as information.
Awesome. I'll accept that motion. Any comments?
No, I just thank you again for, you know, thanks for stepping in and uh and starting to implement some of your strategies around uh like as you've identified enhanced patrols or kind of flexible staffing and or also just kind of um, you know, you're doing more than just kind of keeping the seat warm. You're actually taking a leadership role, and it's very much appreciated, and I I I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, and I'm uh looking forward to tomorrow afternoon.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. My pass is unanimously. All right, eight point two um is the budget. I'm assuming there's no presentation, unless you want to go through it.
No, there's no presentation.
Only polled for voting purposes, so I will have um somebody make the motion. I think Counsel Broadhead's up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the twenty twenty four consolidated municipal and utility budget in the amount of uh three hundred and eighteen million, four hundred and twenty four thousand, four hundred dollars, and then a tax requirement of one hundred and thirty four million, one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars as shown in the attachment entitled twenty twenty four consolidated budget be approved. Secondly, that the ten-year municipal growth capital plan provided as attachment titled a ten-year municipal growth capital plan be approved. Three, that the twenty twenty four municipal growth capital budget of nineteen projects be funded in the amount of ten million, two hundred and forty four thousand, one hundred dollars. Four, that the ten-year utility growth capital plan provided as attachment titled ten-year utility growth capital plan be approved. Five, that the twenty twenty four utility growth capital budget of one project be funded in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Awesome. Any opening comments?
Madam Mayor, can we? Can we split them? So one, two, three together and four, five separate? Four, five together, but in two separate motions?
Want to split, so just speak to the first three, Counsel Broadhead. She's separating kind of municipal and.
Oh, fair enough. Uh, well, Madam Mayor, I mean, the uh, the, the budget in its entirety and uh and the uh motions that are before us are the outcome of the uh debate that uh council had over the last uh month and a half, and uh the minutes of those meetings are attached and were approved today. And so, and not really uh uh interested in re-debating something that we've already debated, but uh in any case, um it was a tight budget year, and it was uh one that I think council probably struggled with a little bit, but nonetheless, we came up with a decision around uh what this would finally mean for twenty twenty four, and that's what's before us today.
All right, thank you. Counsel Hughes.
Um, thank you. I pulled this off for voting. We just have to realize that five and a half percent tax increase cannot be a standard moving forward. And both this council and future councils have to do better. Residents cannot afford to have their taxes go up by almost a thousand dollars in one term. And a two hundred and twenty dollars in one year times four would be over a thousand, not including the utility rate increases. So I can't be supporting this. There was several motions we could have done that wouldn't affected tax rate. It would not affect the quality of life of residents. It would not affect the staff, and it would not affect any of our programs and services, and yet they were defeated. And um I can't be supporting something when I know that this tax rate could be lower. And we have to realize that we have to put motions for it to reduce it if staff do not do it, because five and a half percent cannot be an acceptable standard coming up the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no more hands up. Anything to close, Counsel Broadhead? Oh, Counsel Brabansky.
Thank you. I just want to mention that I will not be supporting this either um uh as related to the uh changes that are occurring in uh Aero Utilities, and um I don't have clear, clear in information in front of me to see what this year will be affected by that. So at this point, I won't support. Thank you.
Anything to close, Counsel Broadhead?
Well, I have lots to say, but I won't say it. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Motion passes by majority with Brabansky and Hughes opposed, and now the other two, which Counsel Broadhead has already read into the record, um I'll accept those last two, which is four and five. Anything on the utility side, Counsel Broadhead?
Madam Mayor, we have the uh, the Chair of you uh Aero Utilities sitting on uh our council, and uh he is more than willing to discuss at length the issues related to utilities. So any sort of uh thought that there is a lack of information, I think is uh well, anyway, it is what it is, and uh here we are, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'm calling for the vote. Voting's closed. Motion passes by majority with Counsel Brabansky opposed. Nine point one was the bylaws that come as a result of those budget motions. So why don't I go to Counsel Mackay?
That uh bylaw twenty six slash twenty twenty three be read a first time.
All right, accept that.
Mayor, I have a question before.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. So to staff, so it appears that our utility rate increase at the budget was seven point two percent. It's now gone up to eight point five. Can you just share where it went up and why?
Yeah, we have um Regan, Director of Utilities, online. I'll defer to him for initial explanation.
Yeah, we have Regan, Director of Utilities online. I'll defer to him for initial explanation. So I guess I'll just start off with Aero Utilities had been projecting a dollar seventy-three per cubic meter. So that was a twenty-three cent per cubic meter increase when we contacted them in late September. Um, and then as as things moved along in late October, they they had projected a dollar eighty-five a cubic meter, so a twenty-three percent rate increase and and that was what was approved on November twenty-fourth at the board meeting.
Okay. So this the change, the reason why we didn't discuss this at council during the budget was because it was on the twenty-fourth? Is that why? I just, I'm surprised that this wasn't mentioned prior to today.
Um, through to councillor Hughes, that it was part of the omnibus motion that council had approved through the budget. So it was detailed through there in the dollar value. Um, but the percentage increase was not a part of that.
Okay. Okay, um, and then also the outdoor, there's the outdoor water consumption that went up from two seventy to three seventy. So what does that mean? That's not the regular water consumption, correct? Or what does outdoor water consumption mean?
So outdoor water consumption refers to those customers that don't have sanitary sewer service. Um, and and the challenge that we have is Aero Utilities charges us based on all the water that comes into our community. So uh, we have some customers, they're not connected to the sanitary sewer, but we have to pay wastewater treatment charges to Aero Utilities for all that water because it's based on our master meters as as they come into the city. So uh, things like Jensen Lakes is is one of them. Uh, we have a number, we have our bulk water stations. Um, so we would have a hole in our in our utilities budget overall if we didn't also collect for wastewater treatment charges for that water that's entering our community.
So why is this so high? Why wouldn't it just be the same as if like just say, okay, even though you you don't have sanitary through us, we're just going to charge it for you as if you did. But why is it such a high number or or is everyone's that high number and I'm missing it?
No, be because we're charging for the wastewater treatment piece for those customers that have both services in the wastewater charge. For the customers that are our outdoor water usage customers, we're charging for it just in the water charge because that's the only charge that they're being charged. It's a cost that we're incurring in order in order to get the water and we have to pass that on to the the customers. So so we charge it through the water rates. It's it's an additional cost on, so we're not just paying Epcore for the water and then we have our own charges to distribute the water. We also have to pay for wastewater treatment for that water and we don't have sanitary collection charges associated with these accounts or with these customers to to collect that.
Okay, I got the circle now. So what I'm wondering then is it for regular people, like all of us that have regular sanitary, is that our combined rate is three seventy per cubic meter? Is that our realized rate when you break it all down or add it all up?
It's it's more than that because we've got our collection charges, our our lift stations and and our 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 management of the collection system on top of that as well. So so the rates are slightly higher than that yet again, uh, because that's not a charge that we pass on to the customers that are just outdoor water usage customers.
Okay, so while we're saying the water consumption is a dollar eighty-five per cubic meter, when you include the in, the out and everything in between, it's substantially more than three seventy a cubic meter for the actual usage for is that what I'm hearing? Like for not for the people who not for the outdoor water service, but for the the average Joe. Um, your your realized rate is actually through over three seventy per cubic meter to.
But that is correct. Yes, it is because we've got the variable rates and then we've also got the flat rate charges as well.
Okay, and so why did it go up by so much money? Like a dollar a liter is a pretty good hike. Is that just? That's like more than twenty-three percent. So um for the outdoor water service rate, let me clarify because we're all over the place right now and that's my fault. Um, why did it go up so much?
We're playing a bit of catch-up on these rates because it's it's a disconnect that we didn't see that we were being charged for wastewater treatment for all the water that was being used, not just for those that had sanitary service, but we were charged being charged for wastewater treatment for all the water that was being used in the city. So so the last last couple of years have been catch-up years for that. But we've been undercharging for the for these customers.
Okay, and I I don't know if I read this correctly, um, but please let me know if I read it if I'm remembering it wrong. But um, I thought it said something about in the beginning of next year, there may be additional rate changes depending on what happens with Aero Utilities. Is that correct or am I just misinterpreting something in this document? Like, are we assuming that this is the final rate or could there be additional changes between now and next January even on the costs for um wastewater?
I I'm not anticipating further rate increases be now and next January. So so they may that may be um old information because we had the dollar seventy-three and we were anticipating a potential for further rate increases. And then it ended up coming in at a dollar eighty-five for the area utility charges so that it might be related to that. But we're we're not anticipating further rate increases for utilities.
And what was the rate in twenty twenty-three in comparison? What am I paying now per cubic meter going in? Like it's not one eighty-five, it's going to be one eighty-five. What am I paying now as a human being?
So for the water, the 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 variable rate did not increase for water. So it was a dollar eighty-five in twenty twenty-three and it's a dollar eighty-five for twenty twenty-four. Uh, the flat, the flat rate increased on 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 the water side of things. The variable rate increased on the wastewater side of things.
Okay, and the variable rate increased by, you said, twenty-three percent? Okay.
Uh, the the just the Aero Utilities piece, I increased by, their rates increased by twenty-three percent.
Okay, and that's one component of many, I'm guessing. So it's not our overall rate on that side or not?
It it is, it is a significant component. It's it's fifty-four percent of our wastewater budget. Um, so so it's a significant portion of 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 what we um collect from the revenue that we collect from our wastewater customers. It it's a significant component of that. It's over, it's over half of our budget is the Aero Utilities charges.
Okay, I have a question for councillor Mackay then as the Chair for Aero. Um, so do you anticipate the rates staying flat in next year? Or do you anticipate that in twenty twenty-five, we're going to be looking at another increase? Like I know it's twelve in advance and advance, but I'm just asking from your point of view. Um, where do you see things going? Because it's had a pretty big increase already. So I'm just wondering if we can expecting a bit of a leveling off here or not.
The information forecasted uh for next year is already been passed on uh to our municipalities and it's two oh five, two dollars and five cents potentially. And that's just, I mean, and that information came out on twenty-second of November. It came out in a memo from Mr Fletcher, prepared by Mr Fabe and with the reasons and 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 that the cost projections potentially as to two oh five. They uh, the light at the end of the tunnel in relation to Aero Utilities is the opportunity that we are in right now in a partnership with a hydrogen facility that gives us a revenue opportunity that isn't available to other uh wastewater service providers and the only one in the area is Epcore. Uh, and so uh, we're looking at twenty twenty-six to be rate stabilization and and holding at two oh five. The other thing I have to add is is that uh, we are doing a full asset management and we are also doing a full review in relation to our how our flow is projected. And and I I'm going to uh say that we'll have to wait and see what the outcome of those uh that asset management plan is through an outside consultant, but I I'm not going to sit here and promise you that the rate will change. But right now it's projected at two oh five and the information that came out earlier as well, it clearly outside out identifies the the challenges, the issues and some of the opportunities that are available for Aero Utilities and potentially, um, you know, what are the main drivers and kind of what could have could have happened if we would have been looking at this earlier. But we've got a new CAO, we've got some new board members and we're we're moving forward. But yes, we recognize that this is a challenge for municipalities. But we at least we do have some light at the end of the tunnel.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to say you have to be right. I just wanted to see which way we're going. So we're going up and then hopefully flat is what you're telling me. So okay, thank you. I just think residents are probably going to wonder what's going on. So appreciate that. Thank you. That's it.
I had a long conversation with the media that this after this earlier this morning.
All right, I see no more questions. Can't remember who made this motion. You did councillor Mackay, did you? It was just first reading. Okay, now I'll accept it. Go ahead. Nothing further?
Nothing further.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes with councillor Brabansky opposed, second reading.
That bylaw twenty-six slash twenty twenty-three be read a second time.
Call for the vote? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes by majority with councillor Brabansky opposed. Councillor Jolly, feel like do unanimous consent?
Sure that unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Voting is closed and that passes unanimously and third and final reading councillor Mackay?
How about bylaw twenty-six slash twenty twenty-three be read a third time?
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. All right, we are on to councillor Hughes's motion. No, we have the emergent stuff. Next, which was emailed to us today. And who's our representative on the Arts Committee? Is that you councillor Brabansky?
I can speak to this, Mayor.
Are you going to speak to it?
Yeah, so we had appointed, we had council had passed the um appointments for the next term for the council committees. And since that time, we learned that two of the members appointed to ADAC won't be able to fulfill those responsibilities. So we need, we have two vacancies and the terms are effective January first. So we were hoping to get that approved today to add the two new members so they can begin right in the new year.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And um councillor Brabansky, am I correct? You're the Arts representative on the committee?
I am the Arts Representative, yes, but I was not advised of this prior, so.
Uh, you were emailed today.
Today I was provided with the information, but not the, I don't know who quit the committee, so.
It's it's in the email you received this morning. Do you want to make the motion?
I'll let someone else make the motion, please.
I I can, Mayor.
Go ahead councillor Jolly.
Let Brett Limeroy and Christie Fleck be appointed to the Arts Development Advisory Committee effective January one, twenty twenty-four for a one-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Appreciate that councillor Jolly. Anything further?
No.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that's unanimous. Now sorry. Uh, we are uh, oh, we have council updates before we get to councillor Hughes's motion. So last update of the year, councillor Brabansky, do you have anything?
I do. I have a few meetings from the um wastewater commission, uh, North Saskatchewan uh Water Association. So um, I'll go through those.
So you said the wastewater commission?
Sorry, not, I'm confused, sorry. The uh, N S W A and the.
Oh, the Watershed Alliance, okay.
Yes, Watershed Alliance or, okay, so with the um the Watershed Alliance, we had the Watershed Wednesdays and there was quite a presentation there. We had a a presentation from uh, Mike Christensen, who's a watershed biologist from Epcore. And um, so we we focused on the water treatment and the health of the water in the area. Um, Epcore drink water uh meets or exceeds all provincial and federal water quality guidelines, two thou- uh twenty, two hundred and seventy thousand tests per year and thirteen thousand samples. So again, it was all good news with the water. They're using cameras to monitor like damming situations and and where the agri water is meeting with our watershed and nutrients are monitoring for uh chloride, drugs in the water, nutrients, uh biological waste. And again, a lot of the um, the monitoring that they're doing is great success. And the water health is in uh good condition in our particular area. So that was a positive update. And then with the um North Saskatchewan uh Watershed Alliance, um, I'm sitting on the nominations committee and we're forming some diversity in the group and creating it for the AGM that's coming in the spring. So there'll be more update on that. And that's it for the water situation right now. Thanks.
That is good news. Thank you. Councillor Hughes?
I'm going to beat you guys to the punch, uh, to Ken and Wes. Uh, so we had the Audit Committee meet uh yesterday and we've uh moving forward the RFP. We're hoping to have it out in January and to have a vendor of the organization that'll be using through the next audit will hopefully start by the middle of March. So uh, yeah, so we're just, we're moving forward in that and that's hopefully full steam ahead now. That's it. Thank you.
All right, and councillor Jolly?
Thank you. Uh, so Youth Advisor Committee did not have quorum. Um, this seems to be a trend kind of in summer, fall, so something to keep an eye on.
That was seniors?
No, seniors are always there, youth.
Okay, sorry, youth, okay.
Yeah, um, I'm not the rep on seniors anymore.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then Homeland Housing, um, we had our um kind of big budget meeting, so um, some of the kind of cost pressures that we were looking at include, you know, increased food costs, inflation. Um, there's some uncertainty about the lodge assistance grant program, so the province is doing some work on that. Um, same thing for uh kind of funding to to maintain our buildings. Um, and um, so we approved a three and a half percent increase to the requisition um to to cover that. So that was done there. Um, also really exciting, um, the kind of it's public now that Smokey Lake Foundation has entered into a management agreement with Homeland Housing um for kind of a a couple of months and um really excited about that partnership. So that's another housing body a little bit further north. That's all I have.
That is it. So it's it's not a merger. You're just providing the operations for their lodge?
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. All right, uh, in chambers, I've got councillor Killick, anything to report?
Uh.
How about CSAC?
I was gonna, I was gonna say, I think we've approved everything that CSAC uh discussed after uh, long debates, so I'm very happy that it got approved uh today. And I think all the agencies would also uh, share their, we we had transitions come in and say thank you, but I'm sure each one of the agencies um, would would have expressed their thanks as well to uh, not only the committee, but the city for its level of funding that's been provided to them for twenty twenty-four. Um, just quickly on Edmonton Salutes, we had our final uh, meeting where we re-elected by unanimous consent, our Chair and Vice Chair, Chair being Brian Hodgins and uh, Vice Chair being Roseanna Perrin from uh MFRC. So they're re-approved for two-year uh, terms, which is uh, great to have that kind of stability in Edmonton Salutes. Uh, we also made a year-end donation of any uh, of our funds that were left over from our our overall budget. Um, and that was uh uh, twenty-seven hundred dollars uh was left over in our budget that went to the Veterans Food Bank and the Padres pantry. And then we had a um year-end wrap-up uh team dinner and then a tour of the Veterans Food Bank uh, where two key things, I would say it's um uh, interesting to note that the Veterans Food Bank uh, shares food and resources with all the other food banks. So they're not a standalone, even though their name might indicate that. And they were also uh very thankful for the collection and donation that was made locally here by our Legion Two Seventy-One uh, which collected and donated a significant amount of food and cash, which was then uh, sent over to the Veterans Food Bank uh to be used over the over the Christmas season. So uh, that's it from Edmonton Salutes and CSAC.
Thank you. Councillor Mackay?
Thank you. Um, two committees now that councillor Hughes has brought you up to speed in relation to the Audit Committee. So the Policing Committee, you just heard the results in relation to the last Tuesday's meeting. Uh, also, you would have all been invited to tomorrow's open house at the detachment. Um, I think it's two to four, something like that. Um, also, I just came back, speaking of my other uh commission duties and we talked a little bit about briefly and it's nice to hear uh the report from uh councillor Brabansky in relation to the state of water because uh, where EL Treatments Plant is, it's uh, upstream from where Epcore Wastewater Treatment Plant puts in their effluent and then their effluent then merges into the North Saskatchewan River is where we also put our effluent after is cleaning. But it's nice to see that there's a conversation about water reuse and uh the dialogue around One Water. Uh, because we start to see the state of not only our province. Uh, because we start to see the state of not only our province, but the entire uh probably uh western hemisphere in relation to the state of water and that ends some of the dire predictions that are around there and, and uh a lot of that, what uh Aero Utilities is working on is water reuse and the concept of uh sustainable management of water. And uh, and uh so hence, we were in Ottawa looking at uh informing uh the federal government in relation to some of their recent decisions around uh uh two major hydrogen plants in the industrial heartland that will sign significantly, significantly increase the um wastewater coming to our plant. We're talking in the neighborhood of ten to twelve uh mega liters uh of wastewater and um coming out of these plants. Uh, if you think about two point five being the size of an Olympic swimming pool. So you can imagine what the impact is on our plant and the capacity that we have. So these, these announcements come out, but they forget about announcing with some of the infrastructure that's required in relation to that. And unlike municipalities where growth pays for growth, we don't have that opportunity. And therefore we have to go back to the ratepayers or go back to senior levels of government for assistance. And yes, we do charge back rates to our uh, to our over-strength load, load providers or uh users. Uh, it's never significant like we find in relation to our ratepayers around tax increases that we have. Um, so uh, we're, we're determined to uh uh work with the province around finding some uh funding sources to assist us in our capital projects as we are in informing um the federal government. And actually, we were quite successful in, in uh both the province and also at least raising awareness in Ottawa among several ministers and parliamentary secretaries and staff of so, of some of the main uh ministers in both the uh uh federal government and also the opposition. So cautiously optimistic about um moving forward, but um, we won't know till next year, the earliest.
Thank you for that and your advocacy. And Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, certainly just touch base on the Internal Audit Steering Committee. Uh, it's my first meeting since uh uh being reappointed to it. Uh, looking uh like it's going to be a good, a good year. I'm happy to be a part of that committee. Uh, from my other committee, uh, the uh E M R B Audit and Finance Committee, we met on uh December seventh. And of course, uh, the item on the agenda was the twenty twenty four budget. And uh, so being an audit and finance committee, so our entire meeting was delving deep into the uh budget. And I was happy to uh announce that uh, you know, by and large, it was, is ready to go. There were some questions. There's a, they're coming back with a couple of policy additions uh to make sure that uh every line item in the budget has a dedicated uh policy associated with how it would be reported and spent. So anyway, that'll come back and uh, yeah, that was my uh month. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now we are on to Council Hughes's motion. Council Hughes, I'll get you to read it in.
Um, you know, Mayor, I'd prefer if we did it on January twenty third because I'm just waiting for that I R related to fire to come back first. So uh, I'd rather just uh not take our time up today and just wait to have that additional information.
So you have an I R that, which I R is that?
It's related to fire with overtime. So it's not back yet, so I'd rather just wait till, like, it's not, it's not imminent. The, the fire contract expires at the end of this year, it's on the background there, so I will wait until January.
Okay, we'll put on January twenty third.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, I need a motion to go in camera for the conversation with the C A O. Pardon?
Oh.
General.
I always skip over that part, don't I?
General questions and announcements.
I always skip it, sorry. Information request, notice, motion, announcements. You have something, Mike? Oh, you wanted to talk about E Vs, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, just a general question. Uh, Madam Mayor threw you to Mr. Fletcher regarding the status of um, E V parking um signage that would designate them as E V charging stations only, not parking. And my understanding is we're, we're still missing a, an actual bylaw for specifying um whether there are appropriate fines or wording around uh E V charging station usage. So um, just would like to see where we're at on both, both of those. And I, I'm not even sure if we've made a motion to change or introduce a bylaw change. So maybe that'll help clarify things.
It, it does. And I know that uh I would ask uh both Marta and Aaron to uh, to, to fill in any holes we've got. Uh, we did a review after the last discussion. So in fact, our current traffic bylaw uh under section twenty three, three P, as in Papa, um, if I got that right, um, is sufficient uh to enforce uh parking at the E V stations. Um, in fact, as of today, uh, M E S went around, looked around, the signs are compliant. Uh, so we are able to enforce parking at those locations and they will uh be, be proactive uh in the next little while in terms of looking at. And obviously, we encourage folks who see violations to contact our dispatch uh and report that. And so Marta, Aaron, I don't know if you've got anything you want to add to that.
No, that's everything.
Nothing to add from me either.
Well, I was just gonna ask a follow-up question. There, a- and again, this is a long thread on Saint Albert Check Facebook page. So uh, I take that information with a grain of salt. Um, there, there was some questions being raised as, does the bylaw have to be posted on a sign so that people know what law they are breaking? So that, I hate to, hate to put it that way, but um, so that they know conversely, how it would be enforced.
So uh, Aaron has his hand up, so maybe I'll just start and then he can jump in. Um, so the way our traffic bylaws were did for that section that uh Mr. Fletcher cited, twenty-three sub three sub P that talks about traffic control devices, so any signage on city land. Um, as long as we feel it's it says what it needs to say in order to be properly enforced. So no, technically, if it's for city laws, it doesn't have to say it's pursuant to traffic bylaw. It could, but it doesn't need to in order to be enforceable. Um, and I will just stop there and throw it to Aaron if he has anything further.
Uh, nothing to add. That's all I was going to say is uh, there's a misconception that that bylaw has to be written on the bottom corner of those signs, but it does not. So those signs that are currently up is, is a hundred percent enforceable.
Okay, perfect. And, and the fine, if, if it is enforced through a complaint, is, is it eighty dollars? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you very much. And then asking those questions more um as referenced for the public because a huge amount of confusion out there. Um, so ho- ho- hopefully people will, will get the message. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Kilik. It can get a little frustrating when you need to charge and there's a bunch of gas cars. Um. Yeah, keep going if you've got more.
Okay, uh, just to, just to say that um, the fin- final report for the Snowflake Festival has been issued. Um, as requested by Counselor Jolly that there would be full financial accounting uh when the um motion was approved to fund it, uh, we have submitted that final report. And uh, glad to report that we ended on a positive note of six dollars and four cents.
We want that.
And uh, uh, so uh, if there are any questions at any time, uh, please feel free to give me a call or, or send me an email on, in that regard.
Once again, thanks for all that, Council Kilik. Council Jolly?
Thank you. I have a question related to the uh art, the public art motion that was approved. Um in that report, it said that the, the owner of that building can put basically advertising on the side of the building. So I'm just curious, are, are billboards allowed, like commercial billboards allowed kind of throughout downtown? Or how does that work?
Hmm. No one seems to know right off the bat.
Yeah, I, I think we might have to take that as an I R uh to delve into it, Counselor.
I'll send that in, thank you.
All right, anyone uh notice of motion, I Rs? Oh, Council Hughes.
Um, to follow up with Council Jolly's as well, it's like, if they are allowed, wouldn't it require the same permitting process as any other billboard? I guess it's not just that, but what are the restrictions? Or it's just, I have a building and now I can just advertise for it versus every other billboard? So I'm just curious if they have like an annual fee or have to go through an application process? So while you're doing that, just to, in case you didn't do it. But the other question I had is, I had an I R a while ago, which was Phil, about uh the capital projects um and about whether or not we are going to be changing our processes to encourage the contractors to complete their work faster. I know we had discussion at the committee of all about this and we talked about we've used more like a stick than a carrot. And Counselor um Kilik said, you know, that they basically budget in any penalties into their original bid. So I came back and asked for that and I didn't, I appreciate how long the answer was, but didn't still answer. Are we intending to change the processes to allow or to, to do a carrot and stick type of process? Or other motivations to have them come to the work sites next summer? More, I don't know, are you going to say with more people? Than, than what we were seeing to get the work done faster? So is that an intention or not? Because when I got the background, there was a lot of things saying what we could do that would cost us more money, but not necessarily that this is one of the elements that we were going to do.
Yeah, um, so, so the short answer is, uh, you know, still yes, philosophically, we are absolutely looking at ways to better enforce compliance with the terms of, of an, or of uh an agreement. I, I don't have the details offhand. I'll have to go back and, and flesh those out uh unless Ann Victor on, from a procurement perspective, has anything to add.
Okay, we're all good, Council Hughes?
Um, she doesn't have, can you just get back to me, uh, Mr. Fletcher, or not me, but to Council, just with a, a bit more of just clarity of are we applying to use a double motivation, not just a penalty, but another level of motivation to get them to come? I just don't want to be inundated again this next summer with residents saying, why is Saint Albert Trail blocked off? And there's only one guy working and it's going on for weeks and end. And um, well, they work at a different job site instead. So can you just get back to us when you have an opportunity later on this week and just clarify if that is going to be taking place or not? Is that okay?
You want it as an I R?
I don't, we don't get to as an I R, I just want an email back to just let us clarify.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking uh, Mr. Fletcher.
So we'll, we'll take it as a follow-on to the I R that was um, was already produced. Um, so I don't think we need it read in again, but if we could have, but clearly it's not going to happen in twenty twenty three, if that's okay, it'll be eight, well into twenty um, actually, um, Tim um is online, I believe, and, and said that he can provide some context, so maybe we can do that now, if that's okay.
Sure, and through the Chair to Counsel, Hughes, the, the current um carrot and stick is employed into our contracts. It is a uh, it's called a site occupancy and how it is enforced is the contractor will designate the duration that they anticipate taking to complete the project. And it is a, it is a credit to the contract value. If they completed in a shorter duration, on the flip side, there is penalties on the opposite side. Now, we are looking at different alternatives where it will be a specified completion date to then bring that in. Um, we do take a project and we break it down into phases to limit as much unnecessary risk that we will put onto a contractor, but at the same time making sure it's within our best interest. So we'll have milestone completion dates and that is added in there. We're always looking for new and better ways to, you know, take the risk that we should be taking on, but then put the productivity risk into the contractor's hands, so to say. It is a, a shared opportunity. Um, but yes, there is, the, it does go both ways in the current format and we are looking to bring that in without necessarily, you know, we, we don't want to add cost if we're not seeing a benefit to it, that, if I can say that appropriately, so.
Okay, okay, you know what? Like, we don't have to kick any further than that. I just appreciate the follow-up, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. All right, um. I'm seeing no more hands up, no more registered speakers here, so now I need a motion to go in camera. Council Kilik.
That Council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the Chief Administrative Officer pursuant to section twenty four, one A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That's unanimous. You guys can make me the host. Okay.